This is Monroe County Board of Representatives now, six to the chair, first and Senate Senate President, God bless the United States, states have seen from Monroe County. Commissioner Miller, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes, as my heavenly Father, we come unto him before the throne of grace this day, and, Father God, we thank you, Lord, for the many, many blessings that he was held upon us, thank you, God, for allowing us to live right here in Monroe County, we thank God, we thank you, Lord, for the leadership and guidance, God, that you give us each day, Lord, and pray, God, that we'll always, Father, look to you, and every decision we come before us, we pray, God, that this blessing, this meeting, Lord, we pray, God, that we will do the best we can for, Lord, and after the county, but with its ladies and guys.
Commissioner Everhart, would you lead us in prayer?
Attention, salute.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're proud of the President, Daniel Horne.
Here.
Brian Harold.
Here.
Craig Miller.
Here.
Adam Riddick.
Present.
D.J. Sallum.
Present.
Paulson.
Present.
Roger Thomas.
Present.
Travis Wade.
Present.
Dave King.
Present.
We now have a mayor that has something that he wants to present.
Yes, yes, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner, I want to take a moment to recognize it, and I've always said in our budget workshops, our biggest asset in Monroe County is our employees, and one of our employees went above and beyond the call of duty this month to save a life, and I'd like to ask Assistant Highway Superintendent William Odell to come up and Mr. Ryan Burnett to come up, please. So, I think the best way to describe what Ryan done is actually read the proclamation and give a short summary of it, it says, whereas on June 12, 2025, Monroe County Highway Department employee Ryan Burnett demonstrated bravery, heroism in taking action against a life-threatening situation, at approximately 11:30 a.m., Ryan was performing road maintenance on Cold Street Farm Road where he observed an elderly gentleman in obvious need of medical attention, without hesitation, Ryan jumped quickly from his tractor and approached the gentleman, and after assessing the situation, Ryan determined that CPR was necessary and moved into a position to perform life-saving measures, whereas when the first responders arrived on the scene, Ryan successfully had regained the pulse and was monitoring the gentleman until care was transferred to Monroe County EMS, due to Ryan's actions, the gentleman was deemed stable and transported via life star to University of Tennessee Medical Center. Today, I am happy to commend Ryan Burnett for his willingness, courage, and quick thinking, it is my hope that all is well and found in a familiar situation that all of our employees would do the very same thing, and now, I'm Mitch Ingram, Monroe County Mayor, proclaim today, June 24, Ryan Burnett Appreciation Day, Ryan, thank you for what you did. Thank you, everyone.
Can all of y'all come up here?
And Ryan, while those folks are coming, have you got anything to say?
I do, I don't believe that I did anything that someone else wouldn't have done, if you have never went through a CPR class, I ask that you take one, you need to take one as soon as you possibly can, when it comes time to use it, you least expect it. Also, I'd like to say that if you're not ready to meet your maker, you take this time right now to understand what Jesus did for you, he did for all of us.
Amen.
And if you don't accept him as your personal Savior, inevitably, hell is going to happen. Heaven is an eternal place, and that gift is given to you by Jesus and what he's done on that cross. Your expectation of life is just a whisper, you never know, it doesn't have to be an elderly person, young people die all the time. Be prepared, if you're not prepared, if you want to know how to be prepared, I'm going to leave this place out here in a minute, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about your turn, anybody in here. God bless y'all. This is a man's family.
It's my husband.
They lost him.
I can't talk, he passed away on the tour.
They lost him on Friday.
But he gave us another week with him, and he was in UT, he was alert, we all got to see him, we weren't telling him bye, because we thought he was coming home, but he went home, he went home, he sure did, but we appreciate everything he did, I couldn't have done it, I couldn't have done it, I was standing right there beside him, but he was sitting on the lawn mower, and he picked him up and laid him on the ground and did that CPR, because there was no way I was picking him up, but I mean, I know that God put him on that road that day, and he was right there in front of our house, right in front of him, so I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you, William, for what you do, training these guys, putting good people in. Thank you, all.
First amendment is the minutes of the Monroe County Commission from May 27, 2025, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Roger Thomas, Travis Wade, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Nutter Republic applications, do I hear a motion?
So, sir.
Brian Harold.
Second.
Second, William Cross, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Rummels abstained from that vote. Next is our trustee trial balance report, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Danny Everhart, second, David Winters, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution number 0624-4, this is the Monroe County Finance Accounts and the Trial Balance Journal Listing attached, do I hear a motion to approve?
Make motion.
David Winters, do I hear a second?
Motion.
Everhart, roll call, please.
William Cross, Danny Everhart, Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Riddick.
Aye.
D.J. Sallum.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Resolution number 0624-6, this is a resolution to amend the Monroe County other facilities, the general fund budget for the fiscal year 2425, and to bring sponsorship and get money for the Monroe County rodeo in the amount of $20,453, do I hear a motion?
So, sir.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller, roll call, please.
William Cross, Danny Everhart, Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Riddick.
Aye.
D.J. Sallum.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
The word of the public comments was that what you told me, nobody registered, that's all, yes, I have a question, resolution 0624-6A, the following amendment for the Monroe County EMA Department being made in the Monroe County General Fund Budget, and it's to bring donation money in for EMA Department in the amount of $900, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Roger Thomas.
Second.
Brian Harold, second, roll call, please.
William Cross, Danny Everhart, Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Riddick.
Aye.
D.J. Sallum.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Thank you, resolution number 0624-6B, an amendment for the Monroe County Public Safety Projects Department, and this is to bring donation funds for the security project in the amount of $1,000, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Craig Miller, second.
Second.
Travis Wade, roll call, please.
William Cross, Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Riddick.
Aye.
D.J. Sallum.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Resolution number 0624-6C, an amendment for the Monroe County Solid Waste Department, and this is to move money within the solid waste budget for year-end corrections, it's in the amount of $20,500, do I hear a motion?
Make motion.
David Winters.
Second.
Second, Brian Harold, roll call, please.
William Cross, Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Riddick.
Aye.
D.J. Sallum.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Next is resolution 0624-6D, an amendment for the Monroe County General Fund Budget for the fiscal year 2425, this is to move money within the election commission budget for year-end corrections, it's a total amount of $11,000, do I hear a motion? William Cross, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Travis Wade.
We can we give this to the President?
We've already got it.
You already got it?
Yes, this is for Sweetwater's election.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
William Cross, Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Riddick.
Aye.
D.J. Sallum.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Thank you, next is resolution 0624-6E, an amendment for the Monroe County Maintenance Department, and this is to move money within the county buildings budget for year-end approved payroll for hourly employees, this is in the amount of $735.52, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
David Winters.
Second.
Second, D.J. Sallum, roll call, please.
William Cross, Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Riddick.
Aye.
D.J. Sallum.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
Resolution number 0624-6F, an amendment for the Monroe County Accounting Department, and this is to move money within the accounting budget for payout, it's in the amount of $9,000, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
David Winters.
No further discussion.
Second, D.J., any discussion?
I'm just curious, I don't like the word payout, what does it mean, what are we paying?
I have an employee that's leaving, and this is her comp time and her vacation day.
Okay, so payout, I got it.
Roll call, please.
William Cross, Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Riddick.
Present.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Resolution number oh six two four dash six G. An amendment for the Monroe County Circuit Court Department, and this is to move money within the circuit court budget for year-end corrections. It's in the amount of three thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I have a question.
I gotta get a motion first. Motion?
Motion.
Okay. Everhart.
Second.
And William. Any discussion?
I'm not seeing the three thousand, and it's out of line of salary, which is me. With the joke thrown in here, I may be in account of high school, so much as I have this plan. Because I can find the three thousand between line one sixty-nine and eight, I'm just gonna say it.
Well, it's already over fourteen hundred dollars, and we still have one more payroll left, so I'm just estimating that it'll be three thousand dollars.
So you're saying it's over fourteen hundred?
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
William Cross. Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Two, here.
Aye.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas. Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Resolution number oh six two four dash six H. An amendment for the Monroe County General Fund Budget, and this is to move money from fund balance to cover the overages in gasoline lines due to switching to fuel cars. A penny was moved into this fund to cover the anticipated shortages. The amount is forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
David Winters. Is there a second?
Second, but discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. For the sheriffs. You're, you're over forty-nine thousand dollars, three hundred overage in fuel. I mean, the other departments are holding tight, what's going on here?
So, this isn't on him. This is, when we were doing the budget next, last year.
Yeah.
At the last minute, we decided to do the cards instead, and I said I wouldn't want to change the budget, because I didn't know how to estimate. All the other departments besides the mayor's department had enough money in their line. These are the only two, the mayor's line item and the sheriff's line item are the ones that came up short. But, every, all the, all the other departments were fine. Because before they were in gas at the highway department, so they only needed gas every now and then. But you go from there now and then to filling it constantly, I didn't know how to budget that. And we had, I had never budgeted it before, so this, this is not all on him. And we moved a penny, and I told you that this would probably be short, and I didn't know how to estimate it, and we moved a penny to cover it. You move the two pennies from the highway department and general fund to cover the shortages.
Okay.
Any other questions?
With this overage, are we still within what we budgeted last year? Where, where are we at? We were fifty thousand off the budget mark?
Yes.
Any?
Was the budget still fifty thousand more?
Yes. So, we did increase it. Hopefully it'll be enough. It's hard to tell how much fuel with, with it going up and down, how much it will.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
William Cross. Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Resolution number oh six two four dash six I. An amendment for the Monroe County Sheriff's Department to move within the sheriff's budget to cover court time and overtime overages in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred two dollars and eleven cents. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Craig Miller, motion. Second, Travis Wade. Any questions? Roll call.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Next is resolution oh six two four dash six J. Following amendment is to move within the jail budget to cover overages in the inmate medical line due to just now receiving invoices from last fiscal year. And this is in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, six hundred nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Everhart made motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Adam Renn. Any questions?
You, what, what was your overage for? I mean, why, why were we over in this law?
Um, because we were paying last year's invoices, basically. And I brought a copy of them, if you want to look at them. Um, fast access sent us invoices dated, um, twenty twenty-three. We received several, um, invoices, um, on June the third.
That's efficient.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
DJ?
So, this is all contractors?
This is contractors. We've had an issue with this. This is the first time this company has had this issue.
Yeah.
QCH, signal, we had four, one thousand, and the late waters, plus six thousand, worth of medical bills before they sent it to us. And we didn't know about it, and the bodies didn't know about it, because they knew the bed on the third side, so it'd be a call to what's supposed to be going down now. And that was, I think, a celebration, that they were negotiating with the time. So, we are leading with this provider to see if, uh, formation is, does it sort of rule of conduct, because it shouldn't have.
I won't vote for it again, I'll tell you that much.
And you don't have to, but I mean, it's gotta be paid, and, and we went back and double-checked to make sure these weren't duplicate invoices, and they weren't. I mean, we had not paid them before. But they're all legit inmate, um, medical.
I understand, we just, we have obligations to close out our budgets and everything else.
I, I mean, I agree.
Bills from two twenty-three, I mean, if they can't do their budgeting better than that, then they can eat that cost.
But you're allowed to use your allowance for twenty-three bills, hitting twenty-three percent on time.
Exactly, exactly. So, in your meeting, I would let them know this ledger, at least one board member.
I'll need to tell them, you know, I'm on these, uh, search charts today, because this is a paperwork for you guys.
Dale, read, this is a question I have, because we believe they matched about sixty, ninety, ninety-one, and that, if they don't send it to us in that timeframe, it's only been through the fourth, fourth, or the latter, the payment, so, uh.
As part of contract, we could do that, they wouldn't have to accept it, you already got a contract, and we fired them.
You make that condition, you can come back.
That's what I wanted to happen.
Good luck.
Yeah, my builder says we've had them off. I'm, I'm, companies I fire for stuff like this, and they end up being the same. So we're saying this is twenty-two, twenty-three? Or twenty-three, not twenty-four?
But if you start testing, they'll get started, you know?
Absolutely. I believe. Yeah, that's.
I'm sorry, I didn't, there's two sides of that figure, boy, they just pay little days, so.
Can you put within ninety days in the contract that they need to send the re-voices?
Or we are, they're, they're responsible, but we can quit in contract, that means outside the contract.
Correct.
Ninety days is wonderful, I'd be happy with a mix in this for a year, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's great.
Those are, that is, we're such negotiations, and rather than you contract, you provide.
And that is gonna be the biggest topic to be discussed.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
William Cross. Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Next is resolution oh six two four dash six A. The following is an amendment to move within the ARPA budget to cover year-end balances, and this is restricted to other government, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Do I hear a motion to approve? David Winters. Travis Wade, second. Any questions?
I was just clearing up the buzzer, it's into.
Yeah.
Roll call.
William Cross. Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Resolution number oh six two four dash six L. A resolution to grant approval for the Monroe County Solid Waste Department to submit an application to the Department of Solid Waste Management, which is a grant that will fund ninety percent up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with a twelve thousand, five hundred dollar match to purchase solid waste equipment for the Teleco Convenience Center. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Roger Thomas. And Danny Everhart. Any questions? Roll call.
William Cross. Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Next is resolution oh six two four dash six M. And this is an amendment to transfer interest funds out into other accounts. And this is a total amount of four billion, six hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars and forty-one cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Travis Wade. DJ Sall, second. Any questions?
Just, just one, I, I know we're moving the paper lines and all that, but this money enough, stay together, reinvest together, and we'll draw interest together, correct? We're not separating for those purposes. Great.
Roll call.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
No.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
None. Travis, did you help know?
I voted aye.
Aye.
Resolution number oh six two four dash six N. And this is the following amendment for the general purpose school fund budget to transfer interest funds into the GPS from the debt fund, and this is six hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars and forty-one cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Craig Miller.
Second.
David Winters, second. Roll call, please.
William Cross. Questions, this transfer of funds, we already have into Monroe County, just to pay.
Part of that, it's part of that four million we just transferred. Some in the schools, some in the, some in the road. So it's what we discussed, two days.
Yes, yes.
So we're gonna see increased taxes if we buy this, basically. Certain later to them, two, three, or down the road. But, if we're just transferring it over from one fund to another, that's fine.
We're gonna start the vote over, though.
Or?
Get a discussion after the vote is started, then you start the vote over.
Okay, so, start the vote over, please. Roll call, vote over.
William Cross. Danny Everhart.
Aye.
Brian Harold.
Aye.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sall.
Aye.
Paulard Son, Roger Thomas, Travis Wade.
Resolution number oh six two four dash six O. The following amendment to Monroe County Highway Fund Budget to transfer interest funds into the highway fund from the debt fund. And this is two million dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
David Winters, Travis Wade, sorry. And David Winters second.
Questions, discussion. Gail, this money that we're moving over to the department, you can still keep spending that money without our say-so, right?
No.
Correct, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
William Cross, Dan Everhart, Brian Harold, Craig Miller, Adam Reynolds, DJ Saler, Paulard Son, Roger Thomas, Travis Wade.
Resolution that the following amendment for the Monroe County Solid Waste Fund Budget to transfer interest funds to the solid waste fund from the debt fund. And this is one million dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Danny Everhart, DJ Saler. He was closer than I either. Roll call, please.
William Cross. Dan Everhart, Brian Harold, Craig Miller, Adam Reynolds, DJ Saler, Paulard Son, Roger Thomas, Travis Wade, David Winter.
Resolution number oh six two four dash six Q. The following amendment for the Monroe County General Fund Budget to transfer interest funds into the general fund from the debt fund. And this is one million dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Travis.
Second.
Second David Winters. Any questions? Roll call, please.
William Cross. Dan Everhart, Brian Harold, Craig Miller, Adam Reynolds, DJ Saler, Paulard Son, Roger Thomas, Travis Wade.
Next is Resolution oh six two four dash six R. That the following amendment for the Monroe County General Fund Budget to move funds from the opioid settlement reserve for the tenth judicial district to help fund a drug task force. It's in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
David Winters second by Travis Wade.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Gail, is that what the balance out on the opioid stuff?
No. This money is separate from the opioid council money. There, in this account, this money is litigation money that we have received from the pharmacies where they got sick. Right now, there's over four hundred thousand dollars in that account, and it can only be spent towards opioid related.
Thank you.
For maintenance benefit, are we required to fund this beyond that account? I mean, there's four hundred thousand, we're moving fifty thousand for a new employee. Does that obligate us?
No, I mean, you can say no.
We can say no next year. But obligated beyond this one approval?
No, you can submit a letter every year, and it will come before you decide this.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
William Cross, Dan Everhart, Brian Harold, Craig Miller, Adam Reynolds, DJ Saler, Paulard Son, Roger Thomas, Travis Wade, David Winter.
Next is Resolution oh six two four dash oh eight. And this is a resolution setting the tax levy in Monroe County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The total tax rate is one dollar, five, two, two, eight. It has not changed. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Roger Thomas.
Discussion.
And Brian Harold and Travis. Discussion.
Gail, this may have been at a tax increase, this will be the third budget that's going to be a zero tax increase, correct?
Yes, since eighteen nineteen.
Thank you.
Since eighteen nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen year. Our tax levy has not changed.
Some days that feel like.
Yes. Roll call, please.
William Cross, Dan Everhart, Brian Harold, Craig Miller, Adam Reynolds, DJ Saler, Paulard Son, Roger Thomas, Travis Wade.
Next is Resolution oh six two four dash oh nine. A resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies of Monroe County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And this is our entire budget. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Danny Everhart, motion. Second Travis Wade. Any questions? Roll call. Questions?
I'm just right here. I got a conflict with a lot of this stuff that's going in here. And some of it's good, some of it's bad. I'd like to, I don't know what this timeline is.
Open for discussion.
Yeah, we have discussion.
How much more risk do we need than we're probably need? How many could we're probably need?
Well, I didn't bring it with me, we're going into fund balance, two million dollars.
Well, how can we operate? Sensible to that give somewhere. These taxes are going to be, you know, with the burden. We're overstating on the regularly, so we're going to have. We might not have a tax raise this year. Few years shortly, I'd reach that with fund balance, not get that. We will have a tax raise, and we're going to tax raise if we go through this.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Danny Everhart, Brian Harold, Craig Miller, Adam Reynolds, DJ Saler, Paulard Son.
No. No, no, no.
Roger Thomas?
No.
Travis Wade, David Winter.
Monroe County School Board Education Budget Department. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Roger Thomas second. William Cross, roll call, please.
William Cross, Dan Everhart, Brian Harold, Craig Miller, Adam Reynolds, DJ Saler, Paulard Son, Roger Thomas, Travis Wade, David Winter.
Oh six two four dash ten. A resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Monroe County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And the total amount is one million, four hundred thousand, four hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Danny Everhart, second by Brian Harold. Any discussion? Roll call.
William Cross, Dan Everhart, Brian Harold, Craig Miller, Adam Reynolds, DJ Saler, Paulard Son, Roger Thomas.
No.
Travis Wade, David Winter.
Resolution number oh six two four dash eleven. A resolution on the Monroe County Commission to ban any portion of Edward's Road and converting it to a public road with specific right of way. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Craig Miller?
Second, but I want to have a discussion, I want to hear what this is all about.
We've got, we've got a couple of folks here, I'm going to divert to our, our wonderful Monroe County Surveyor, Michael. He, he brought the proposal to the county to Stacy and the planning department for the request. I know that it's been discussed with the highway department with William, Mr. Teague. I think the key thing to the, the whole thing is that Monroe County does not have to maintain the road. But Mike, if you will, explain how we got to this point.
I'm going to give them a little bit of literature here, that amount. If y'all don't know me, I'm Michael, my land surveyor, we've got a couple planes. I'm representing the Fraz family and the US Forest Service in this. This is a section of Edward Road that was dedicated from WRK to that lot in nineteen thirty-four to the US Forest Service. The US Forest Service used it and then actually conveyed it to Monroe County. They were actually able to do that, it's in the deed, I've got a deed here for nineteen thirty-four. And what we would like to do is, since the county is no longer maintaining, is to convert it back to its original state, which was a thirty foot of the road. That was what it was dedicated as. And, and what we want to do is, is make sure in the resolution that the county has no, no ties to it. There's no maintenance request, nobody can tell and say, hey, y'all gotta maintain this because it'll be in the resolution. Okay? Any, any property that touches this road would have access to this road. If they close it, then everybody behind that would be land. Because they would have no access, this is the only access.
How many people is on this road?
Uh, well, it was recently set about. And the family has divided, if you look on the tax map here, you can see all these lots that were recently divided off. You can see all those lots will be land law.
But, but when they, when they did all this, they didn't understand what was land law?
I wasn't the surveyor, I meant, so.
I understand, but if I get the land deal, I'm going to figure out what's going on before I get into it.
Yep, exactly. It's about, let's see, the deed, the deed causes to be, when they dedicated it, twenty-nine hundred feet. Which would start at the forest service line, which would be this is forest service right here. So this is forest service right here, the, the tax mansion.
They cut this up from here.
They cut that up. But what they did was, when they cut it up, they cut, cut to the edge of the road. And not to the center of the road, we want to dedicate it to the center of the road for everyone that has, that has the wall out there.
And the county, the Monroe County, we don't like things up.
No, it kind of the key in this whole thing, in, in the end of the deed here, if, if this road was abandoned, it goes back to the grand open, the Chinese would complete the races. And then, they don't, they don't want to do that, they want everybody to have access. If they take it back, they're the only ones that have the access to use it. So we have the deeds from nineteen thirty-four.
And they'll maintain this road.
Yep. Each, each individual would be, you know, responsible for maintaining it.
Why should we be bothered?
Because it's county property right now.
County property.
It's county road. Even though it's not being maintained, it's still a county road because it's never been formally abandoned by resolution.
But Edward's Road is only maintained two tenths of that.
Yes, but according to this, it was dedicated from the forest service line all the way down.
Did the forest service just maintain it?
No, it did not. The forest service rarely uses, they have a road coming in from the other side that they use, it's gated. But they might not have used this road since it dedicated more than twenty or thirty times. Now, the, the, the surveyor, their, their surveyor, now I am a contractor for them. He came down and then up and did some checking. And he said they don't really want to access that road unless they have a forest fire. That they need to get up on that side of it. Other than that, they're going to access their track from that other road that they already have, it's gated.
You're talking about the forest?
Yep, forest service. The only reason they would actually use this road now would be to fight fires.
Does this road got a gate in?
No.
I have a question, if I can.
Sure.
If, if, oh, front of you on the road.
Yes.
Have they all agreed?
Most everybody, one family, yes.
So the answer is, no, they haven't all agreed.
No, one family doesn't want anybody using it.
I understand they want to take it from county road to public road.
Yes.
That one family agrees that.
No. They, they, they won't stop, they don't want anybody to. They want to close it altogether, which if you do that, then everybody's land law is in there. Which in the state of Tennessee is actually a legal land law.
For county, let me just explain, so a county road, a county property maintain. If you, if you close a county road, it becomes, by operating laws generally, a public road. Public road is county's disowned, because public has no, no right to maintain it, no obligation to maintain it. But people who can, can demand that it be open, nobody can close it. So if you might put a gate up, make it stop, then it can't make, take it over gravel on there. So eventually, it's a problem, it's going away in the, to pasture, I suppose. But you, if you continue, if you don't, if you don't accept this, and you continue to treat it as a county road, you are responsible for maintaining it. So that's what we're doing, I think what we're trying to do is, is.
It doesn't increase our liability.
It decreases, that's, that's one of those decreases here, it's to help the county decrease.
County, from now, it's no longer have the old ties with that road.
There, there is a short portion that's paid that they can, that they claim that it's up to.
Two tenths of that, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, that's about right.
We maintain two tenths.
That's about right.
My forest service line, about the end of my road.
It is, it's at the end of the road. It dead ends, that road kind of, well, not dead ends, but it stops right in the forest service line. So it would decrease liability for the county. The, the perfect world would be that everybody got a maintenance agreement on the road, and it was tied to the properties, and everybody would be responsible. But that's, that's in a perfect world, and I kind of doubt you're going to.
Everybody else here agrees with this?
As far as I know, we don't want that road.
Yeah, we don't want that road.
We maintain what we maintain now.
It's not a bad road, it's a six. I mean, there is a little gravel on it, it's mostly salt and a little bit compacted gravel. It's not a bad road, it's a six, it's travelable, I mean, I can drive, drive down, no problem. Some of these, in a misremembered that was written wrong, had the line road to the center of the county. Well, we all know the county was on the road, that's not possible. But in this case, everybody gives you abandon it to a public road, but own, own the center of the road. And pay taxes to the center of the road.
So the road runs on reg?
It runs on concrete, that's even, it runs on the concrete, right?
My, my question to you.
Sure.
If we grant this, and they got access to that, then these lots become more valuable, and then there's more taxes to be paid. It's all about the money we're mentioning.
To clarify, the family that doesn't want it, the family that doesn't want it is afraid that whoever buys an underpriced property is going to sell it. And they, they actually put parked cars in the road, keep people up and down. We actually had to get the sheriff department up there to move for us, so we can get in there to do a survey. I think it's an advantage for everyone involved, it's not taking advantage of any of here, it's kind of neutral thing. Not that I know of, we have, if they are, that might be something with people off. I mean, we're very confident it's a cemetery if we do our work. You know, because the law states that if it's a cemetery, somebody is a family here, you have to provide them access to see it, to go there.
And our attorney's recommendation would be, okay?
Well, I have a recommendation, I mean, it's, it seems too reasonable as long as people, the effects are hard to justify. You can have a potential lawsuit, it's like a very big one, a property under the belief that it's a county road. If they bought it, believe that it was a county road, and county adjusted, that would be their thing with, with condemnation, they got, they got lawsuit. But if everybody's in agreement, then it's fine, it's a good thing the county, because aren't they taking it?
Having maintained, has anybody come in, road department wanting somebody to come up and put gravel on it lately?
We, I was up in it, we never maintained it, based on our.
Exactly.
Opinions, across.
I mean, I, I understand his form of view here, and there is a, a little bit of liability in it, but, so. You know, the, as far as I know, there's just one family. And they're right down there, right at the end, they want maintenance. If they don't want any more traffic.
They don't even want the public road, so that would be.
Yeah. But their family, and all those lots have been divided, so they would actually be hamstringing their own family by shutting the road down. Because if they shut the road down, then all those lots don't have any access.
I would like to see if they could, if they did, it's okay. If I were, you have a lot, thank you, might want to do that, if they want to, they're going to say, we're creating a public road. That would be my thought. I know they're saying, they, they, there's no right, they're changing, so that was, if you ask me what my thoughts are, I would say. You know, make sure you can put the, you can see that all, perhaps the other, that they bang over there.
Nobody's the one family at all, she don't want anybody in there.
Well, that's, that, I think, if they say we don't throw it at all, I think that's the same thing, you say we don't want to carry it back.
I mean, really, her property is right there on the county line. She's trying to block what's not being, kind of. Yeah, watch it, we had the sheriff come up and move her a couple times to get it out of the way.
At my comfort level, since the county has a lot of kitchen and those property, we can actually, well, all this, I believe, it's a local road. We can't do it, shut it down, it's up to approval, we can, we might be, so, so.
That's good for you, man. But then if they say no, then you're all down, you want that part, I'm down in that road.
Well, we have to worry.
Well, if they, they, they do, they maintain. If they say it's county road, so you got to demonstrate that.
If that's county road, we admit to the health, like you make, if you prove county road.
No.
No, I know it was, but I couldn't. So, I'm happy, I take Michael's, I thank him.
No, but they're not making gravel. Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of county roads in the county that are having my page.
Any other questions?
But they want factors on the part of the county to maintain, so if they were.
And I understand your thoughts.
But he's, 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 he's.
So we should postpone this to next month?
Uh, we'd like to see it in writing.
Okay, okay. So I need a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
What if you get all but the one thing? Then what?
We've got a first and second. We've got a first and second, approving it, let's have a vote on that, and then we'll
have the other motion to postpone to a next month.
So we need to table it to a next.
Play with the next one.
But what we do with the motion and second, we already have.
Table it for next month.
Table it to next month. The motion and second. You made the vote.
Motion table, motion table is not table, really, and it comes, whatever position he did for the vote, what can they be proven? Yeah, I know, if somebody makes a motion table, that's, probably overrides the current vote.
Madam Chair, the, the other simple way is, Mr. Miller could just send his motion. That's what he wanted today.
Where you send your motion?
Or withdraw till next month.
Withdraw your motion. Yeah, then I'll withdraw, my motion, no. Same thing to withdraw it, same thing, I make it, he gets it.
Who's gonna be in charge for getting the signature?
Get what?
Who's, who's gonna go get signatures?
I'll roll the duck, and she'll present him.
I'll ask the real estate lady to do it, how about that?
Any other questions, comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Roger.
We just, we just.
Friday, five o'clock, Troy High School, the boys are up on the mountain working right now. And we're bringing them back down, that's their graduation, we're gonna have a fish prom. I'd like to invite the county commission, Roger's already gonna be there, it's Friday. I'd like to invite the county commission to come, all the local officials, any county employees to come by, to show support for these kids. They're two weeks up there, they're, they're coming down tomorrow again, they're gonna have to take it to work.
How'd this year go? Did it go good?
Went really well, we didn't have to thank anybody down at the pension this year, which is the first year, nine years I've been doing this, I hadn't lost somebody else. And I'll bring me back the same amount that I took up there. Nobody's dead to ditch you for it.
Thank you for your work, sir.
Thank y'all.
William, please.
I hope y'all have.